All right, I would like to call the Halifax Elementary School Committee meeting to order on January 3rd at 6:01 PM. Thank you Area 58 for filming as always. Let's stand for the vote of allegiance.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged or scheduled to speak at this time? Go ahead, just state your name and then...
My name is Kathleen Berry and I reside at 34 Highland Circle. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank our dedicated school committee members for their countless hours that they have devoted to the Halifax community and to the Halifax Elementary School. This evening you will make important decisions in regards to the staff at Halifax Elementary, namely substitute and long-term substitute wages. Since I've been employed in both of these positions at Halifax Elementary, I feel I'm qualified to share with you some information you may or may not already know about these positions. First, substitute teachers, they're not babysitters. They are responsible for maintaining the classroom routines, including teaching lessons outlined by the classroom teacher, as well as taking care of any emergency procedures that may happen during that day. Second, not having substitute teachers to cover for classroom teachers causes a domino effect that impacts the day-to-day operations of the school and negatively impacts the learning of our school's special education students. This is because when a sub cannot be secured, a paraprofessional or special education teacher is asked to fill in. Thus, the students who would normally receive these services from these educators cannot receive it. Next, in comparison to the other schools within Silver Lake Regional School District, Halifax Elementary subs are paid the least amount. A substitute teacher is more likely to accept a job at a Kingston or Plimpton school than Halifax for this reason. Next, you may not already know this, but long-term subs are required to hold a teaching license and are asked to work outside the regular school day, including but not limited to staff meetings, parent communication, parent-teacher conferences, report cards, lesson preparation, and grading. However, unlike the regular classroom teacher, they are not compensated for this time, nor do they receive sick time, personal days, or vacation time. The first 21 days of employment, a long-term sub is paid a per diem sub rate of $95 per day, or a little more than $13 an hour. Minimum wage went up to $15 an hour on January 1st. This means that neither position of a substitute nor a long-term substitute within that first 21 days is receiving currently minimum wage. Also, if a long-term sub accepts a second job during the same school year covering for another teacher, those 21 days start all over again. How can we attract and keep qualified individuals for these positions at these wages? We should not only be competitive within our own district, but also within the educational system and other employment where similar levels of responsibility and education are required. I thank the committee for hearing me out and considering this information that I have shared this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? We now need to review and vote the regular minutes of October 3rd, 2022. So I need a motion for that, please.
Was there a question about the vote on that?
Yeah, that's why we're re-voting.
Oh, we're re-voting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I just need a motion to approve the regular minutes from October 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. All's in favor? Aye. Next on our agenda, we have the MOU with Halifax Police and a possible vote. Considering the fact that Mr. Keegan's not here tonight, and that was sort of something that he's been working on throughout this school year, I would recommend that we bump that to our next meeting where he can be present and speak on it, if that's okay with the rest of the committee. There's no objection to that. Is everybody okay with that? We don't need, okay, we don't need to take a formal vote to move it unless there's an objection, but I just wanted to run it by you guys. Okay, so can we move that to the next meeting, please? Thank you. And next is discussing the long-term sub-rate.
Sure. So you may recall last spring, I recommended that we consider changing the long-term sub-rate to paying long-term subs the bachelor's step one rate starting day one and to not wait the 21 days. You may recall that the difference at that time was about $3,700 by not waiting 21 days to pay them the bachelor's step one. We do search for licensed individuals who have bachelor's degrees for these long-term subpositions. And given the fact that we have had some difficulty attracting candidates for long-term subpositions, I'm asking the committee to consider this change.
So just to be clear, you are asking us to take a vote to allow when we hire a long-term sub to begin at bachelor's step one and not wait that 21 days any longer?
Yes. And this is different from the daily sub, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Okay.
Their bachelor's step one was $50,199, or $272.82, I think was the original estimate when we first proposed this. And so the difference for 21 days at $272 is about $3,734.22. But at the time, the committee was considering some budgetary concerns, and again, they didn't feel that they were in the position to make that kind of a decision at that time. But given our position, we thought it would be worth our mile to present this to you tonight.
The other question I have too is sometimes do long-term subs... I mean, there's positions open in the school, right?
Many.
Okay, so why would another thing, I mean, this is probably, I don't even know if I'm allowed to say this, but maybe if long-term subs were, if you can tell them that there's the possibility of being hired full-time if everything goes well, you know? Like, I mean, to me, that would be a way to fill positions that would also attract long-term subs, in my opinion, but I know that hasn't always happened. I mean, you know, because like, who wants to go to a temporary sort of contract position when there's no hope of getting permanence there?
True, that's true. I mean, right now, we're looking at six long-term subpositions.
And how many open positions do you have?
Right now, they... Two, three... Three are filled and then three are pending because they haven't started yet for the term to leave, so...
Because it seems like to me that's a great way to hire people, that you have to, I mean, obviously you have to, you know, whether it's, you know, but, I mean, I feel like that would be another thing on top of offering more money, is why have someone in the building having a whole train to be there and then just replace the individual as a person?
Not all scenarios are an open position. Some scenarios are leave, so it really is just a set period of time that we can offer for many of the long-term subpositions.
I think Lauren's point, like, I don't understand, but sometimes when it's a retirement position and it's advertised as a long-term sub for the remainder of the year, I think we would be best served to instead advertise it as a permanent position, and we'd be better able to attract or retain somebody rather, I understand, returning to leave, most likely they're coming back in short term. But if it's a retirement, why can't we advertise as a permanent position to fill in for the remainder of the year and then become a...
You can.
Totally.
So I, there's nothing preventing anybody proposing retirement for a permanent position for the year. I think there's two schools of thought. One school of thought is the position that you just articulated, and I think there's got some wisdom there. I think the other school of thought is that in often times, in the springtime, there's just a shadow or turnover everywhere, and then there's more applicants out there, and then you may be able to get a deeper applicant pool by posting a position in the spring. So I think in some ways it's...
Yeah, but there's nothing saying simply advertise those, that you're not tied to that teacher, right? They have to get renewed every year, the first three years of service, so you could always just, you could, they could be a permanent teacher and then say, "We don't want to renew you for the fall," but that goes for every single teacher that's hired in their first three years of their career in any school, so I understand what you're saying, to get a bigger pool, but if you hire somebody and you're not pleased with what you're seeing from them, you can always just choose to not renew in June anyway. It's not like, "Oh, because we hired them as a permanent teacher, a full-time permanent teacher that we're, you know, can't then..."
Don't say, I'm not saying the teacher that you hold is wrong, it's not like I've said it.
No, no, yeah.
I'm just, there's two ways to think about it, and that was the bit that the mindset when this position was posted, and I think that was taken, and you're bringing up a different point there.
Well, I just feel like too, we need to be a little more creative at this point because of the short it is, you know, so any incentives we can provide are not necessarily monetary because there's a limit to that, obviously, that, you know, I mean, I don't, I'm not a principal, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, you know, but I do think like there are incentives that can be given to people, especially when it's really, really hard and our teachers are in house.
I'm all in ears for the incentives. It's just that we've, like Dave had mentioned, it was when we're looking at these retirements that are happening like mid-year, I mean, this is, this is either the fourth or fifth one that we've gone through over the last six years, seven years, and so we find that when we posted it as a permanent position mid-year, we don't have a candidate pool that we typically have. And that's why, seeing in this particular situation we're in right now with six long-term subpositions, we figured that we would have the possibility of looking at six candidates for that potential, and we've communicated that with all the long-term subs, that one of these positions will be a permanent position come the fall, because it is, because we did have a retirement that happened in mid-year.
Is it average that's available?
No.
Because you could just, instead of saying like, you have one permanent position open and one person gets that, you could say like, who has this money open, a long-term, and then you can all basically interview for who gets that, but one long-term, technically, help the permanent.
I thought you had to post it. I thought we like, were required to post it.
We are.
Okay.
Any openings have to be posted?
Their discretion is whether they're posting it as long-term sub versus permanent, and I think that's what I was saying, is like, I just think a little bit of like creativity to say, let's, let's really try to, especially where there's six, so, you know, maybe if we post some as a permanent position, you'll get more people to even bother to apply because some people will look at long-term sub and not even apply.
Sure.
So I think that...
Yeah, definitely, like I said, who would go for a contract position over a permanent?
Right, a friend of mine wants to lead her district as an adjustment counselor and asked me about the long-term position here, and asked if there's a potential for it to be a permanent, so I have no idea, that's advertised, that must be what it is, I certainly, I'm not giving them any inside information, but she was very interested in pursuing a different district, and she didn't bother to apply because it was only a long-term sub. So if there was that, you know, availability, like with a teacher retirement, well, there might be a teacher out there too, you know what I mean, that is in the same position that might like to lead their districts, but they're not even going to bother to apply because it's long-term sub. But maybe there's a very qualified teacher who just moved or wants to change districts, and then they see a permanent position that they would apply, so. I'm not sure if that was what you meant when you brought that up.
That's what I meant, yeah. I mean, I just think there's got to be incentives beyond, you know, we should really give as much as we can to attract quality people as opposed to putting a band-aid on it and then, I think, again, it's always, you know...
I don't know what power I have is being providing incentives for attracting people, I don't know.
I mean, again, you have to follow the contract, so you can't provide people who are in the contract different benefits than what you offer your contractual employees. And if you're talking about other types of incentives, that would fall to the school committee to budget those types of options.
Well, who decides how a position is posted?
Typically, the building principals have decided, but now we have a new HR director and they work with, they'll, they'll work with Dave in the future to determine how to best...
Do you spend our interviews and make end of the decision process, just very...
Or teachers don't?
No.
So, I mean, I get, I understand the long-term sub is...
Sometimes is just a long-term sub.
Right, absolutely.
But to advertise as a long-term sub here, it's a bargain, right? So I get that, it would be a budget issue if we were to now, instead of advertising as a long-term sub, we advertise, because they would, they, even stepping away from the whole topic of bachelor's step one, if you're hiring a permanent teacher, they might be bachelor's step nine or whatever, so it's going to be a cost increase, but again, to be able to attract and retain teachers here, I think is obviously showing that it's really important. Mr. Godry, of the three long-term subpositions that are filled, do they hold bachelor's degrees in education or...
Each of them, I'd have to look for each specific person, but I know that at least two of them are, have a degree in bachelor's in education, I'd have to check on the third one.
So are long-term subs required by the district to have a bachelor's degree in general?
So, Dave?
We follow DESI regulations. DESI, before the pandemic, did not require subs to be assigned for 90 school days for the last, the need to have a license. But pandemic started, that was increasing to the entire school year. This year, that was extended, so that substitutes do not need the license to be fully-employed or substitute sub.
Okay, so, but that's licensure, but what about a degree? Do they need to hold a bachelor's degree?
No.
That's not the same...
That's traditionally what we look for.
Yeah.
That's not to say that it's not what we're seeking, but in terms of can we likely employ somebody, and a substitute without a bachelor's degree, isn't that a question?
For now.
Until DESI changes their mind.
Well, and since this might be a, I have one question, but since these roles are not filled right now, we're also not paying anyone right now, correct? And is that...
Well, some of these positions, if they're on leave, we're maybe paying...
Oh, we're paying leave, oh, I got it.
As well as the long-term sub.
So, but we're still, yeah, okay, so we're not paying an extra...
So with this potential hope to change, we would be getting rid of the waiting period to be placed on bachelor's step one, and then there would be no other changes, like they still would not have sick days, personal days, anything like that?
No.
Okay. Can we entice them a little bit by getting rid of the, like, where does it come, because they're not, does long-term sub sign that contract? Like, it's not part of the teacher's contract, right?
No.
So can they opt to not attend meetings, like the, what do you have, staff meetings that count a month or something? Could they not be required, or would that be something that we could give them, since they're, you know, not making the same, they don't have all of the benefits of the fully-employed teachers, could they be allowed to?
I think that would be their own choice and decision if they choose not to. I think their own is invited to one.
Yeah, okay.
I would assume they understand the role of the position when they take it.
I don't think I've ever had anyone refuse to attend any grade-level meetings or staff meetings or anything like that.
I think it would be to their detriment if they didn't personally, as a teacher.
Maybe most, a lot of times, long-term subs are interested in a permanent position, and they want a B, a degree, and grades level meetings and staff meetings and going above them.
So, so my question is budgetary, because there are so many positions, would it just be a difference of $3,734, it would be that times six? So, I ask you...
That's then in addition to what we're paying for the person on leave?
On leave.
And then the sub, the long-term sub, so this will, this would just, this would just increasingly pay for the long-term sub?
Right, so my question to you is, does that put us in a tricky position in our budget, or is it something that we can sustain? Because that's where the conversation went last time, and why we didn't move forward with it, is because we simply couldn't afford it. It's not because the need isn't there, because clearly the need is there.
There's at least one retirement, right? So we're not paying for leaves for all of the six, it's one retirement or two?
One.
Just one retirement, so, I mean, at least...
But there's also payouts that go along with retirement.
And we build retirements into the budget, so we, last year, we already had built that, this is our mini-year to the budget. So it can be tricky because, you know, depending on how long they're going to last, but I understand the need may outweigh some of those other questions, and if there's a need to do, then we may have to make other decisions to the end of the year.
Well, it's probably impacting education to not have...
Right, you have to do the right thing, and then we would have to make other modifications and hold off on some of that purchases until it's a better time for them.
I mean, it's a matter of prioritization, which I feel like...
So what if we sort of found middle ground at, like, if not everybody holds a bachelor's degree, we could kind of hold them to that standard, like, if you actually have a bachelor's degree, then we could put you immediately on bachelor's step one, but if they don't hold any kind of degree, then we could have a waiting period, I mean, can we do that?
You could. You should know that the other districts have waived the 21 days, and they have moved towards everyone starting at a bachelor's step one for their long-term subs. So Plimpton, Kingston, Silver Lake, they all made the switch.
They have easier time wiring, long-term subs?
It depends on what they're, they're looking for. So again, there's certain areas that have been more difficult. As you know, we've had a very difficult hiring a school psychologist, and we've been using contracted services for that.
Well, how much does that cost?
That's not an agenda item.
Well, I mean, but that's, you know what I mean, like, what are we, like, so if the services are being paid for anyway, somehow, because we have to provide them, isn't this the most cost-effective way to possibly bolster up?
It's not necessarily cheaper to go through contracted services, no.
Well, no, I'm sure it's not cheaper. What I'm saying is, like, could this be our most cost-effective way of managing the situation if we're paying for contracted services?
So the current contracted service provider is only giving us three days, so he has no idea of supplementing with another contract service provider, but he and Ryan propose to tell you for the continuity of services Monday through Friday, and it's very disruptive. This is not an ideal situation, but it is the best that we could come at this point in time, plus we have not been able to fill the position full-time yet.
Right, well, what I'm saying though, is that just making this vote could actually make a better situation where you have consistency and probably paying less than the contracted services.
Exactly.
So do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to do the long-term sub-rate to bachelor's step one and waive the waiting period for...
Awesome.
I'll second that.
Okay. All's in favor? Aye?
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate that. We hope that it will help. That brings me to item number six, which is the daily sub-rate and a possible vote. We do have a, I believe we have a, as Katie mentioned, an issue here with making sure that we're meeting minimum wage, and we have proposed moving from $95 to $107 per hour. This would bring us to $16.04 per hour. This rate change was recently approved at Plimpton Elementary School to be retroactive for January 1st, because they will do, they will actually have a vote in January. So they, they are, it looks as if they are going to move in this direction. This is the proposal that we will make to all of our communities. So recognizing that minimum wage went up on January 1st, if you were to approve this, we would ask that you approve it retroactive to January 1st.
How does that compare to other districts? You have somebody's getting a call for Silver Lake District versus Marshfield, willing to, where they're going to go?
Dave took a look at some of the competitive rates in local communities and tried to find a, the best spot for us in comparison with other districts.
I think there's a couple challenges. I think this is, many side comparisons, it's going to be higher than some, lower than others. I think the thought into this, how we arrived at this number was, one, trying to get consistency across the districts so that we're not competing with each other. Obviously, we want to be compliant with wage law, and the other thing I think we want to be compliant with is that we want people who are permanent or need to be making more money in substitute, such as Silverdale, and if somebody was a paraprofessional, or if you're a paraprofessional, you're going to want something that needs a permanent job, a substitute job. So we want us to make it high enough so that we're competitive districts and we're complying with law, but not over potentially our, our permanent employees to take other positions.
So this is, that's kind of that super thought, sorry?
That was our best, kind of, compliance.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to retroactively increase the daily sub-rate to $107 per day.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, warrants are circulating. Do you have a single signature or warrant update?
So tonight, there are eight warrants circulating, totally $833,689.80. In addition, there are two cafeteria warrants of that as well, and then there are also payroll warrants that we need at town hall. On November 8th, seven warrants totaling $385,810.69 were signed to the town hall by Jessica Page, thank you. And also on December 5th, eight warrants totaling $265,199.59 were sent to the town hall and then signed by Jessica Page once again, thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
These are the payroll things.
Yeah, sign every page. Yep. Correspondence and reports, I don't have anything at this time. New business, I have nothing. Does anybody have anything? Unfinished business?
So, thank you. I, well, just random things that, I don't know if that's a good time to ask about. One is, was the school council up and running, Mr. Godry?
We're planning a meeting coming up in June, which I'm still looking on a community member.
Still looking for a community member?
Yeah, sometimes we've had, like, the police department has stepped up, so...
But you have staff and parent? So you haven't met yet this year, then?
No.
And, I don't know, it's a little random, but Mr. Keegan had asked Mr. DeSantis to attend, and thank you for attending, Mr. DeSantis, but I kind of checked around, and I don't know if that assistant necessarily attends, so I don't know if we want to wait and have Mr. Keegan speak to him next time, but I don't know, I just feel that they have a lot of students and a lot going on. I don't know what the norms are surrounding that, if we want to talk about that, about who should attend meetings, or who's required to attend a meeting, if we wanted to have that conversation so that Mr. DeSantis doesn't have to come, but we, you have any needs to be here?
So, so again, generally, the principals attend. There are certain events or issues that sometimes will ask the assistant principals to attend as well. But you're correct, oftentimes we'll have one or the other attend because they do have early mornings and they, they try to divide and conquer some of their evening obligations. But again.
It's not a lot of these meetings. It's kind of everybody, goodbye. Your chart.
Yeah, great. So, I mean, I don't know how much the committee members feel, we can ask Mr. Keegan to kind of follow up next time if you wish, but I, I appreciate you having Mr. DeSantis. See the need, I think Mr. Bodry can answer for anything that needs to be adjusted at the school.
I can do this. Hold on.
Oh, gee. And then the other thing, I was just wondering when in the, like, our committee gets a chance to give input to the school calendar? Like, so that it's not that it comes to us and then we vote for it, like, is there a chance and when is that chance for us to get input to that?
When the superintendent brings the draft calendar to the committee.
Tonight.
Oh. Is that, was that on the agenda?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, understood, okay, thank you.
And every year the superintendent brings the draft calendar to all of the committees to discuss and invite on.
Okay, thank you. That was all my other questions.
Unfinished business, I think we sort of just covered that. Future agenda items, always welcome to email me. Of course, make sure you CC the superintendent and Karen Tringali with any correspondence regarding school committee matters. Report of standing committees, policy did not meet, although there was a discussion about potentially meeting in the future. Negotiations, we will discuss in executive session following tonight's meeting.
Were we going to discuss possibly really meeting in the second session for that?
I don't think we should have that discussion without a full committee present.
All right, colleagues.
But yes.
Okay.
Just because I don't know what his opinion on it is and that's where he sits right now. PAC, I don't, who has PAC? I don't have my reorder chart in front of me. Is it him that has PAC? Okay, so he did not provide me with a report and he did not provide me with one for youth and rec either, so we'll have to update that at our February, we have a meeting in February, right? Yeah, February meeting. PTO?
The last meeting mostly revolved around getting ready for the Mingling Jingle. And it was great, we tried to incorporate several different religious holidays into the celebration with crafts and decorations. And so most of the conversation was around that they canceled the December meeting. The president's position is still open, Christina Wilson is still residing, just, you know, until someone else can be found to replace her. That was a good one.
Thank you. Capital budget has not met, but we're going to start budget, preliminary budget discussion tonight. Admin review?
There is a date.
Okay.
It is. January thirty-first, six to seven.
That works for our person.
Let's see. Oh, that was last year, sorry. Wrong calendar year. January twelfth, five-thirty. And that is. It appears to be in person.
Where?
At the high school.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Curriculum review has not met, Union Thirty-One, we met and had a joint meeting, which I believe everyone was present for because every committed, commit, committee was invited. Again, I want to thank our department heads, Marie Gravel and Steve Palo and Melissa, Melissa Farrell for all coming together and giving their overview of where they think the district is at from the last year and where they foresee us heading in the future. I think it's very valuable and now that we do it all jointly, it seems to be a much more efficient method of moving forward. It's a lot of information for all of us to digest and of course, they're always very open to any kind of communication that if we have any questions. And thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Gravel. We also discussed the school's start time, working group gave us a little bit of an update of where they're at, that's still in the works. There was a brief discussion about the calendar and sort of where each committee saw the calendar going and if there would be any changes moving forward, but we're going to talk about that at the end of our agenda tonight. And then there was a brief discussion about student surveys. But that will get kicked back to the policy subcommittee because that would, any change in the way that we conduct surveys in the district would require a policy change, which needs to come from the policy subcommittee. So, there was anything about that meeting?
That's good.
Okay. Next is Mr. Bodry.
I have very little, just because of budget discussion, so, but I just want to recognize that we have three babies that have gone through. Sperma had her baby and Ms. Parker and Mrs. Muller had a baby between December and January, so.
Wow.
It's exciting.
I'll be doing well. And wanted to point out the fact that Mrs. Muller, in her retirement, had over twenty-six years in here and over thirty years in education. So she missed, her birthday was on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
Thank you. Any electronic package, should I, it was financial. And just a few highlights I wanted to print out, it's right at the very first detail page, you see a debt of two hundred dollars for indemnification. That's with a policy that we have that covers the school committee when they act as a group with Union Thirty, with Union Thirty-One. Because each town has their own policy for the school committees, but it's when they act as Union Thirty-One, there was a gap there, so that's what that policy is for. And when my budgeting was fifty dollars off, because we actually paid for an additional month this year. We had delayed, we paid for a month that we paid for the year, so there's a slight difference there. In the technology section, you'll see this is one deficit, one of the accounts of twelve hundred dollars. The technology budget will not be overrun, we will, we will just keep that in mind as where it worked within the budget. There was a change to one of the purchase rates that was, we do not know about at the time of the budget for last year. Electricity account, which is, it's at the bottom of page two. That's the children deficit all year and based on the activity last year, that's what we have for this year. And as of the December bills, it still looks like we've got a, that's a little bit of an end of the decade deficit there. So I'll fill that into next year's budget, I'm going to keep that line to next year's budget. But within this year's budget, there will be a surplus in that area as a total because it, it cuts to one in the gas account. There's a small deficit in one of our two hundred accounts, but that's sort of just as needed, so we can't really predict that, that's just as we need to do. It's only two hundred and seventy dollars. And then as you go down through the special education area, under contracted services, there was a deficit of forty-four thousand dollars. And that is because that's what we're paying for the services, the contracted services for the school psychologists. But we are seeing that salaries not being spent, so that will offset that deficit to the end of the year. And then under special education, also to tuition, you'll see there's a deficit of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, don't be alarmed, please. That was before our circuit breaker funds came in, we did get confirmation of our circuit breaker funds. And I did want to say that we received almost nine hundred thousand dollars for tuition and transportation. So last year we had a significant issue with transportation overage. And we were reimbursed for some of those costs, so that's making a significant impact to this year and then also to the twenty-four budget.
Great.
And then out of district vocational, there's a surplus there because only three of the students that we had budgeted for are attending. That's it for right now, unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, so under curriculum instruction assessment, we should have an update on how we're using our student support survey this year. So inside the packet, I've included a memo just to outline this year's plan on using our student survey. The purpose of surveying our students is to ensure we're meeting every student's needs and also evaluating the progress of our social emotional learning curriculum, so you know we implemented a second step in September of two thousand, the Panorama, Panorama survey, which we utilized last year, that's aligned to second step. I wanted to share with this committee that our plan to administer that survey, what occurred in February of this year, grades three through twelve, obviously only three through six is relevant to this committee, but just sharing the overall memo. Just like last year, students would take it online in school, it takes twenty-five minutes to complete. Survey focuses on relationships, meaning like, do I feel like there's an adult I can connect with at school? Goal setting, growth mindset and other topics, all of the questions are linked inside the document that I provided. So our plan would be to communicate our intent to continue to use the survey via email. Inside that document, we would share all of the questions. Families would have an opportunity to opt out, just like last year, if they didn't want to have their student take it. Included would be how the results are used, the way that results are used. Classroom teachers would see how students responded in the topics of growth mindset, grid, self-management, self-efficacy, social awareness. So you can see, those are the topics that the questions cover. And then also the school support team would have access to that information to make sure that all of the students' learning needs are met. And in the past, we had talked about, there were questions about student privacy and safeguarding data, so I put a link inside the memo that provides a little bit more information about that. But I wanted to provide, committee with an overview of our plan. We discussed this at our admin team. The principals agreed that it was a helpful tool for them to use. Last year we did have, we surveyed in the lower elementary grades as well, but the way that survey is conducted is it's based on like teacher impression versus actual student responses. So you can imagine that students below grade three would have our time to time to a survey because of emerging literacy skills and things like that, so our administrative team made the decision to just use it in grades three through twelve so that students would have the opportunity to respond based on their thinking. So that's our plan for this year, I also, it just included a screenshot of what it might look like at the school level, the data that comes back. It's compiled by the topics I talked about, growth mindset, grid, self-management. Students reported that they felt like they didn't have, you know, had a hard time advocating for themselves or didn't believe that they could improve their performance with effort. They're, they would be rating themselves lower, like the light green. And teachers could see like, oh, this, the student believes that, you know, their ability is fixed and how else could we design learning experiences to show that with effort we can learn? So that's the kind of information that's provided, I think sometimes just showing you what the information looks like could be helpful so that you would know how it's used. So I wanted to share this with you and all the committees to let you know what our, how, what our plan is in using the student services.
I feel like these surveys are important given some recent tragedies, you know, given like if you look at the questions at the end of, you're being scanned from other people, do you have somebody who can provide, you know, if these are those, our essential things, you know, for all of our students because, you know, we just never know what's going on in someone's head. And I hope that students feel comfortable answering honestly, like I look at all these questions and I think they're tremendous as far as understanding some support that could be, you know, could hopefully change some outcomes.
So if the teachers get the, the data collected as their class or individual students are tied to the individual students, they see their responses?
Correct, so if you're a fifth grade teacher, you would see just the students in your class, you would get a general view like this that says, this is your class. Then there's also, so under each topic, like growth mindset is a topic, then under that, it would, it would provide the student, it would sort of give you a rating of where that student falls in your class, you know, there's those colored bands. So if a student's self-reported view of growth mindset were like green, yellow or red, that would give the teacher that information. They, there's never a, you can never see how an individual question was answered, but there are six questions that speak to growth mindset, so you don't know how, no one ever sees an individual response, but the responses are tabulated to give a score based on all of those questions. One of the questions inside, the wellness piece talks about students, likes your strengths and asks kids to identify their own strengths and if the students would self-identify that they have no strengths, teacher would be able to see that too. And I think that's just a good piece of information to have. We don't think that the survey is a single catch-all, it would just be part of one of the tools. Because during the middle of the year, we would imagine that our teachers have a very good sense of where our students are at. But to ensure that we have as much information as the teacher has, as much information as possible, you see this as one more layer, just trying to verify that.
But you can see trends, you know, hopefully, you know, see, I mean, we have mental health, big concern. See how the general population is doing.
That's the intent, because we would ask every student and family to take it, so the intent would be to, to try to get that sense.
This might be weird, I don't know, like, but is it possible that you can have parents fill out surveys? Well, I don't know, it's like, I mean, we might be getting into like medical stuff because you fill out things with the doctors, but like, something where parents can possibly reach out, because like some of these questions, like, do you have a teacher or other adult from school who you can count on to help you no matter what? That's a question I'd like to ask many children, you know, like, is there someone you feel you can be yourself around? Like, these questions are important for conversations, I think. And, you know, you think you, I mean, I know kids are not very able to, like, they're teenagers, but I feel like if you even start to have a conversation and non-diligent, I, I don't know, or maybe we can do a parent night or something, I don't know. But like, just something, like, things to ask your kids, like, these questions are fantastic. Once you get upset, how often can you get yourself to a, you know, these are, like, that's a telltale, you know, and, and things like that where, you know, like, because, I mean, I'm sure a lot of parents are like, I don't even know what to ask for kids, you know, because they're, you know, how's your day? I mean, everyone's got that response, you know, so. But like, I find that more specific questions give you more specific answers. So even if they're like, oh, I don't want to talk about, you know, like, at least you asked, which I think always makes everyone feel at least recognized and seen. And I'm not saying like, you know, just as far as, you know, helping our students especially, you know, there's, we still have not seen all of the, you know, we're still going to see the fallout from the pandemic for years for children, for adults too. And so anything we can do to encourage communication and openness and acceptance, I think, would be good. So I don't know if that's something, like, I mean, just to, even, you know, well, I guess even sharing these questions and saying, you know, maybe talk to your kids about these questions or something, I don't know.
Mr. Lynch, you had mentioned, and I want to thank you for adding, or including information about just being more transparent with the survey in general. It was clearly a concern of mine when we first initiated this, so I'm thankful that you were mindful of that when you're providing that information to parents. I noticed in our memo, there is a link to these questions as we're looking at them now, is that also in the information that's going out to parents? So, I mean, parents, I guess at that point, can take it upon themselves to, you know, to your point.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you can just put that in the memo, like, feel free to ask your kids some of these questions, there's weird questions in there. You know, they might, or ask someone else to ask your kids, he's more, they're more than we can talk.
Yeah.
You can start at the bottom. Who can trust, can we? But, I don't know, just thoughts.
Sure.
But I do think there are weird questions, honestly. You can check in.
Is this the final draft of this survey?
This, this would be, would be comparable to the, it's the same one we used last year, so it would give us sort of a trend line. So it gave us sort of a trend line. We gave it twice last year, but there was slight improvement over the course of the year, but we think we can get the information in with just doing the survey at one time.
Do you have to think time of year also, impact answers, January? Or February?
Well, that's also, I think, actionable too. Like, it's, you're getting a sense in the middle of the year, and you have time to improve or improve even more. So, we think with a single administration, this would be the time to do it, and then before state testing starts, you know, March, April, it would be better to, you know, use that time now.
I'm not critiquing the whole survey, but there, I don't know if you're open to any change at all, but I just, the performance in school, where it says whether a person does well or poorly in school may depend on a lot of different things. I think that's just a hard sentence, because that's so subjective. Because somebody's really well might be somebody else's poorly, and vice versa. So I just, I would love to, I don't think that sentence even needs to be there. I don't even see that it really fits anyway, but I just think that that's really hard to think about, because to judge yourself, well, maybe my best might, you know, be somebody else's worst, or maybe my worst is not else's best. And I think that's so hard to use those subjective terms with kids, because then you're, it's a, it's inherently comparing to somebody else when you talk about doing well or poorly. It's all about the best you can be. So I don't know. I just, if you're willing to take any feedback, I would love to, and I don't think the sentence needs to be there anyway. I think that you can just start with your next sentence, and just get rid of that sentence altogether. I just always get sensitive about thinking about comparing students and thinking about when you say you're doing well, you know, what that, what that actually means. Because it definitely means different things to different kids. But thank you for sharing it, and giving us a chance to review it.
Do you have anything else?
I do have that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Prue?
Okay, just a couple of things for the district update. We don't have an MSBA project on our radar. But just so that you know, we did receive a notice from the board of directors to pause the 2023 accelerated repair program. So they were not going to be taking any new projects this year under the accelerated repair program. So I've just been announcing that to each of the school committees. The other item is that-
Thankfully, we did the majority of repairs already.
Yes. We did have a training session with our building administrators with Attorney Kim Roach from DuPerray Law. Changes to student discipline under Mass. General Law Chapter 71, 37, H and 3/4. There are now additional steps that have to be taken in order for suspensions to be lawful. So, the legislator, the legislation now requires school districts to regularly implement alternative remedies such as mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and/or collaborative problem solving prior to suspension and for schools to document the use of such alternative remedies. And so, a bulk of that training, although this wasn't the only thing we talked about in terms of discipline with Attorney Roach, was really about the need to document what steps have been taken prior to resorting to suspension. It should be noted, though, that these additional requirements do not apply to Mass. General Law Chapter 70, 37, H for infractions involving assault of staff, possession of weapons, or the possession or distribution of controlled substances. The additional requirements do not also apply to Mass. General Law Chapter 71, 37, H and 1/2, which is related to felony charges and convictions. So, those, those incidents do not require additional steps to be taken prior to suspension or removal from school.
That's a good question. So, is that information going to be sent out to parents, or should I answer that?
Those things will be reflected in changes to the handbook. So when we make handbook changes, any language surrounding 37, H and 3/4, that language will be updated, but that's not something that we would necessarily send out to parents separately.
And where, that's a lot more work for administration? Is that just getting added on to their roles or responsibilities, or is there any way to-
Well, it's, so, again, it's more documentation, but I think that our principals do, do a good job of trying to find alternatives to suspension. We all recognize that the more time a child spends out of class, the more likely they are to fall behind, and the more likely they are to disengage or feel connected to school, and that really doesn't serve anyone well. So thinking about those kinds of alternatives. So, yes, I do think it's, in some ways, more additional documentation. But I think the intent, if I recall, Jason Frazier is on the Silver Lake School Committee, and really, he did a great job of explaining how the legislation came to be in terms of, as part of a larger mental health concern, and also recognizing, you know, the, when students drop out of school, they're more likely to become a, a problem in society, and more likely to end up in trouble with the law. So this is a way to, to really, for schools to think about alternatives to suspension, because-
Yeah, I think it's great to just, another thing on their plate to try to document and find different alternatives.
So, yeah, I don't want to undermine the work that they have to do, but it is, they're ready.
No, I think it's, I think what Jill had said, it's just reflecting on, you know, the intent of, you know, really assessing like what we've done to try and remedy the situation, and documenting what we've attempted and tried, and it's really willing us to, not just say, oh, you're suspended, see you later.
So the next thing we have for you is our preliminary budget presentation, which I think we will present up here for the benefit of viewers at home who don't have access to the presentation on their laptop. And I will start us off by recognizing the process that goes into creating this budget. As you know, in the fall, we begin very early, where we ask the principals to reach out to their staff to find out what their needs are. Our principals work with their custodial staff, and Matt Durkey as well, to talk about possible capital plan projects and their needs for the upcoming school year, but also to create a capital plan that spans several years, trying to anticipate some of our future needs. As you know, we also looked to Marie Grable, and she gave her presentation with a special education overview of the different programs throughout the district. And Melissa Farrell gave a budget review. And then Steve Pello also introduced a number of programs and requests for the upcoming year in terms of technology. Once we have all of those requests, we meet as an administrative team. We review it, we ask questions, we ask Kane to prioritize or explain his thinking on certain items that he has proposed. Christine then goes in and moves over things like staffing and utilities and those types of costs, and that brings us to our preliminary budget for this year. We always look at what our academic and developmental needs are for our students. We look at trying to maintain class sizes and the structures necessary for effective instruction. And the building principal does a great job of highlighting class sizes in his narrative, but also some of the structures and concerns that he has for the upcoming school year. We also like to be mindful and consider and respond to the fiscal conditions of the towns. And we also, for this reason, we looked at what it would take for level services. And I wanted to note that we did add the DLC, Developmental Learning Center, in the fall. So that is a new program here in Halifax, but we'll, we'll share some of those benefits with you as we begin our budget presentation. But we wanted to remind you of that, because that was a new addition this year, the DLC program here in Halifax. And then we also look to make sure, in what ways do these priorities support the strategy for district improvement? Are we moving in the same direction, and will they help us to achieve our goals? So, we like to try to give you an overview of some of the traditional types of information that we share with you at this point, some of the assumptions that are built into this preliminary budget. We have estimated circuit breaker at 70% or $500,532. Regular day reflects a 5.25% increase of $315,000, $315,177. Special education tuition and transportation reflect a 4.27% decrease. Substitutes are at FY23 levels, and utilities have been updated. The total budget is an increase of 2.12%, or an increase of $192,071 more than last year. That's to maintain our current programming and staffing. This does not include any additional staffing. You'll notice, if you look at the preliminary budget detail, you'll see some resource reallocation to address priorities. You'll notice some areas where the budget has, there's less money being spent, and other areas where we anticipate more money being spent. We do not have any known retirements at this time for FY24. We have included an estimate or placeholder for a school psychologist, which we were not able to hire this year, at least not yet. We have, out-of-district vocational represents about five placements. We have three currently in programs. We have one student graduating, and so we have about two additional placements, but we won't know the exact numbers until April 1st. So this, again, is an estimate. Not included or updated in this budget, we have some shared cost included, but it has not been updated to reflect any new FY24 shared cost budget changes. We have additional staffing requests that Principal Bowdre will speak to this evening. There are some potential enrollment increases that we may not be able to anticipate. For example, kindergarten is notoriously difficult to give accurate numbers or estimates in terms of enrollment. And we have not taken a reduction for the REAP grant. We're hoping that that will come in about $35,000, and we would be able to take a reduction in technology hardware for about that amount. But again, that's an estimate, and it is not reflected in this budget that you see in front of you tonight. So now, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Bowdre, who's going to give you some insights into his narrative and some of his requests.
Thank you, Jill. This year is just projected class size enrollment from 2023 to current year, where we have 555 students enrolled. We're looking for 2024 to maintain the current setup that we do have. We have four classes at each grade level. You can see the large, largest class going on grade six. In estimating our incoming kindergarten, 75, we estimate our enrollment to go down. Actually, it's a 526 to this year.
Do you have, to me, it seems like enrollment's been going down every year?
Yes.
So, do you have, like, what and how much has gone down every year? Because I know you can't really predict kindergarten, but if you look down the numbers, I mean, I know there are some higher ones, but-
Last four years, we've been right into high 60s. But yes, I want to say, my first year as principal, we were definitely over 600. I went 610, I've been for 615.
It's weird, there's like bubbles of like a few grades that have really large class sizes, and then they get really small, and then they're really large. Good point.
So, kind of, I mean, it has gone down. Those are pretty large bubbles that we have there. Fourth grade, I want to say, currently, which is at 86, that's, I think, is probably typical for Halifax since I've been here for 12 years I've been in school, which, you know, is a pretty decent enrollment. We're looking at 20. And then we had a big bubble, grades five and six, and then we had small bubbles that have come in six times.
So in a lot of ways, class size is really, that's hard to do with how many kids are in the grade, as opposed to, you know, it's something that can't be very regularly, because we're going from 17 to 26, which is a huge difference. And I almost wonder, I don't know, like, would it ever be possible to move teachers around to accommodate that? Which I know I hate to, you know, to maybe like have five teachers for a grade that has, I mean, it's a big point at this point, but-
But I think that will, let's say you take a low number like 66, grade three. If you would drop that down to three, you're increasing their number a lot, so.
I know, but-
We contemplate that, and like, our class sizes go to lower than the early grades.
Okay.
And power grade six was high, but it was never that high. It was like in the mid to low 90s when they were in kindergarten, when we look back. But it seems like they just, for whatever reason, that grade is just-
A lot have been, or are some?
Has been the most transitioned.
I'm just curious, because overall, enrollment seems down, but then it's, you know, looking at the different numbers, you know, it's, because like I said, yeah, I mean, I would keep doing, I remember it was well over 600 the whole time, and that's a big difference across the grades, you know? So, and I wonder if that's something that should be accounted for budgetary-wise, you know, that we are decreasing enrollment, because a lot of, you know?
But there's also potential for new housing happening, as I said here, so certainly don't want to, like, think about it.
No, I just, yeah, no, I'm not, I just, yeah, I mean, it's just all things kind of considered, I think.
Right. And Kingston, my understanding is going up in all the, and then Plunkton, I think, is so small. Three students, and that increases their numbers pretty much. Yeah, we have definitely seen a decline. It's the smallest number that I've seen.
Yeah, 526 is almost 90 less than, you know?
Absolutely. I think when I first started 12 years ago, it was 625, 630. And then I, years before that, I think it was close, well over 700. Here, we just have some notable increases or decreases in the budget. So we just kind of broke them down into three areas with classroom, tech, and the facility. So, here, first problem there with the classroom textbook line item decreased by 66%, which was approximately $65,000. That's because of the ELA adoption that we recently had with the collaborative classroom over the last two years. The next one there is the instructional software, that's an increase of 25%, which is above $12,000. That's due to adding an accelerated reader, help know, and school log. Accelerated reader, help know, or new, those are going to support for the new ELA. And school log is something that we have had for a number of years. It's just, we want to continue to keep that up, especially for our fifth and sixth grade students.
Hi, I'm sorry, how much is school log each? Or, I'm sorry, I thought you said, I didn't mean to put you in the spot, sorry.
It is like, uh, and you almost found what it had.
2,800. That was, my reading is correct?
Yep, 2,800.
Yeah.
Just, I get that, I mean, that's not a ton of money. It's just Google Classroom is free, you know, and I don't know if the teachers would be willing to try to change platforms, but it's just something to consider, but, you know, I didn't know how much the money was, you know, I didn't know what the number was.
Definitely been out there, the conversation that we've had. But we definitely have some teachers that are very passionate about using school log. And I, I want to kind of make sure that we're providing them with the tools that they-
Right, was it $3,000, or was it $28,000? You know, I just didn't know what that number was, for sure.
Well, then, well, I guess something for like, like, that for classroom, but I mean, as far as teachers, are teachers still reaching out to the PTO to cover? Because I know there are a lot of programs that will, like, the anti-bullying program and stuff that we haven't had in school for a long time. Like, are these relationships being, because I know there were quite a few things we used to cover with the PTO, which would ease the school budget somewhat. And I don't, I don't know, is that still happening?
Yeah, teachers have, which is probably, okay. Since some of them are software, yeah.
I have a question. I have a question. You may not have the answer to it, but, you know, every few years, we cycle through different curriculum updates, like one year it'll be English, next year we'll buy all math textbooks, next year it'll be science. Doesn't appear like this upcoming fiscal year that we are looking to just make a major textbook purchase. However, in the past, I found it beneficial knowing that that was on the horizon, we would split that cost between two years. So I didn't know if we know sort of what's coming down the pike two, three years from now, if there's any way that we could ease the pain towards that, if that conversation was part of this budget cycle.
I'm not sure, Melissa had mentioned it in her presentation.
I don't know if she mentioned it in her presentation, but she does have a group looking at different science resources, but...
Yeah, science this year, and then there'll be a math review, I think, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's on the scale of an ELA adoption, but I think we can go back and look at it.
Yeah.
Good question. We can split it over.
Yeah, just to throw it out there, just because I feel like sometimes we get hit with like seventy-five thousand dollars and it's such a big chunk of our budget that it just seems to lessen the blow if we have a little wiggle room to even split it in half. That seems to help us quite a bit that one year we did that.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, it seems exciting to have.
Right, well, that's why I was like, woo, and then it's like, woo, yeah, but that's going to come to bite you in a couple of years, yeah.
It is, it is a big, but I know Melissa, she tries to stay ahead of the game.
Yeah, she's awesome.
I think she did split this one, the collaborative classroom over the two years, but it's still a pretty big ticket item that we have there.
Okay.
I think science is out next. And then here we have in the tech in the middle column, there's a slight increase in school management software. And tech management software increases. And then we're just pointing at the power school, that was not included in the FY twenty-three, there's an additional subscription of new software tools that Steve Powell presented at the progress school. And then reprint, we're not sure yet, we anticipated it would be around thirty-five thousand dollars, but that also helps offset some of our tech budget. And facility related, custodial supplies are seeing an increase of sixteen percent, which is approximately four thousand dollars.
So that's not actually negative then?
No, it's... Approximate, yeah.
All right.
Excuse me.
And then the building supplies, which is approximately...
No, I didn't, it's hard to tell. It's okay, I think that's what you're saying.
I know, it does look like it's negative. So here are proposed costs beyond the level service budget that are not included. So Brian and I have been thinking about these positions that go above the on or asking. So here you see four different positions we're looking at. It's our building substitute that, this is something that we're looking to put in last year. You can see that we have two years' worth of data there, twenty-one and twenty-two currently. The fill rate is at forty-three percent in twenty-one and in twenty-two currently was at twenty-six percent. So the other buildings have, you know, the school district, they do have buildings up. My sense is it's pretty helpful to be able to kind of fill the classrooms. I think like, this is very, you mentioned earlier, it's better sub, and when we're not able to fill some of those positions, it can get a little bit tricky trying to fill the classrooms. The next one there is the instrumental music position, that was also something that we pitched last year. Right now, currently Halifax Elementary is the only school that does not have an instrument position. Kingston and Plunkton both do, and they're kind of reporting a lot of success with that. That puts Halifax students at a significant disadvantage for when they get to the middle school and to the high school, because our numbers will definitely not be...
I didn't think they hired ones, they used to come over here.
I think last year.
Last year they did. So we've always had it after school, and where Plunkton and Kingston students would do that afterward, but Plunkton put it in the budget last year and it's during school day. I think that, students that are involved with it, and I've talked to Principal Vino, he reported that there's a lot of good success there.
So how does that work, like, so if a student wants to play an instrument, they have time during the day, like, where would that be put? Is it during the specialist?
That's probably the tricky part, one, it's working with whoever that staff member is and when they're available. Because I know particularly Plunkton, they have certain days that they have instrument available, so that we would obviously, who would love to partner with Plunkton because that person is part-time there, but if we could do so with that, then we'd say...
Do students provide their own instruments still?
I'm not sure of that.
Because that's another thing that would be an equity issue, you know, if someone wants to play and it's available, but they can't afford the instruments, which would be another tax app that would get provided for, because I don't know, come on, people sharing.
I think with Plunkton too, what's their enrollment, two hundred?
Two, twenty, thirty.
Yeah, so I think a point four position can get to all the kids that want to learn music. If we were to do that here, we would need more than a point four position, you know what I mean? I think that we would need, I don't see how they could get to service all the children that might be interested with just a part-time position at our school.
Do you have numbers on how many people have signed up for after school, or are you still doing that? Sorry, I think, because I think music is really important, like, okay.
I think with Plunkton, just to add a little bit of details, the Plunkton position, correct me if I'm wrong, is a point six.
Yep.
Full position, point four of those FTEs are devoted to music instruction, like general music. Point two are instrument, so we have twice as many, if this were to go forward, Halifax would have twice as many FTEs devoted toward instrumental. The point six at Plunkton is both instrumental and music instruction, like Mrs. Lazard teaches music. This would be, this point four would be on top of that. The point six at Plunkton is also the Mrs. Lazard position over there. So we would have twice as many here if this position went forward. Two days of music teacher and one day of instrument, where the point four, we would be looking at two days of instrument teacher, because we already have full-time music teacher.
Yeah, my understanding is in music class, they don't, I don't think they ever touch an instrument in music class.
Except for the reporter, you don't remember those painful years?
So just to make it simple, only a point two of the FTEs at Plunkton are devoted to instrument instruction.
Okay.
We would have twice as many here if this were to go forward, because point four of the, yeah, so it's a...
I get, yeah, okay.
I think the data, when you look at high school, it's sort of like, our previous size district, when we look at our high school, sixteen kids? It's not, I mean, we're thinking, getting small girls, yeah, whole two levels are on there.
My concern is that instruments, that's, you know, like, how do we provide instruments?
So we can get to additional information on how that's done, but I do know that at Denit, they typically have a rental program, and then they also did a instrument drive.
That was successful.
Yeah. So that's how they handled it there.
And I can return to Kingston too and see how they handle the instruments.
So then how does that fit in here, I'm sorry? Talking, I have a question about how it fit in at Denit, how would we fit it here if we...
Well, that would be the challenge.
Right.
It would be a schedule thing, that we would have to work with the days that the teacher was available, those two days, and then work it into the schedule so that there's some sort of perhaps a rotation or a specific block that was devoted to that. Or multiple blocks by grade level. But that's a scheduling challenge, but there's no sense in creating a schedule for a position that doesn't exist. But it's feasible, it's done, in fact, this is the only elementary school that does not offer instrumental during the school day. So it's more than feasible, because it's done throughout this part of the state. Is it easy? No, it's again, it's another, you know, building challenge for our administrators to come up with how that would be scheduled, but it is possible.
But just like Brian said, we're seeing that impact now at the high school, and a district our size should have more than sixteen students. Keep going.
Yep.
Next one here, just to kind of, wanted to clarify that our current math interventionist is split between, it's a point four-nine with our current level budget. And last year, you approved to make it a full-time position by Ed, the point five-one from the ESAR grant. We estimate that to be approximately thirty-one thousand dollars. Wanted to just point out the fact that the grant will eventually not be available to us. So currently, ESAR three is available until the end of twenty twenty-four. Could continue to be the same, but I wanted to kind of just put that on the radar, that we'll need to consider when that grant comes out, whether or not we want to absorb it in the budget or...
Would the ESAR grant be used more otherwise than, if it weren't used to half on that?
No, it wouldn't exist. The grant itself would...
Is it, it could continue to be the same?
Meaning that it could stay the same as it is right now, because it's funded for, in twenty-three, point four-nine budget, point five-one from the ESAR grant, could continue to next year, and then after that, the grant is gone. So just wanted to kind of put that on the radar, so we'll need to, also look at that example. Better not to keep that position going, or, I don't know. And this is, this is something that I think that, you know, shared previously is Melissa Farrell, who's our current elementary curriculum coordinator, that's a shared cost throughout the district. She services the four schools, we're eighteen hundred students, pre-K to six. So we were thinking about adding an additional coordinator, pre-K to six. It would be a shared cost position, you know, that's a big, big ticket item for adding a staff member for shared cost. But Halifax is a portion of that would be approximately thirty-three thousand dollars.
Are the other elementary schools utilizing that, or...
I, I don't, I mean, I've had conversations with them, I think they currently are looking at, I think that they want to, but whether or not their budgets are there, whether or not they could do that, I'm not sure if they're quite looking for it, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there to you all, is that it's definitely something, I think that at the elementary level, that it would definitely support an elementary leadership team. Having more than one elementary coordinator would be beneficial to students and staff. I think you could probably, you could definitely pull other districts at the elementary levels, you'd see more of this size, you would see more than one elementary per coordinator.
What about a position that covers a wider umbrella, because I, I mean, I was thinking for you and Mr. DeSantis, I thought the number of students was high, now you're telling me it's actually relatively low compared to past years. But I feel like handling all the discipline for so many students, I'm not sure what that looks like, but I'm guessing it's a lot. And then also all of the teacher evaluations, like, what about a different position that covers a wider umbrella, that isn't just another curriculum coordinator, but another administrator that could help with teacher evaluations, or someone that could help with, or maybe even just create, go to your staff, your current staff, and create like, lead teachers for each grade level, that they could assist with some evaluations and/or assist with the curriculum, and they get an extra stipend for being the lead teacher for each grade level or something like that, rather than just, I mean, I don't know, you know better than me, I just, I think you're doubling curriculum coordinator, that seems kind of heavy, like, I get that maybe that you need somewhere helping the curriculum, but then to double it, I think is almost going too far the other end, where you have other needs, I'm sure, with, again, staff evaluations and student discipline.
Very good points, and so there are discussions at the elementary leadership team of having a coordinator be someone that does evaluate staff, would help, Ryan and I, would be a huge, huge help in that sense, and I know we've talked about that with Jill and Ryan, about expanding that capacity a bit, so that's why I kind of throw it out there to you all.
Yeah, I think if it's something more than just overseeing curriculum, if it takes some other responsibilities off the building administrators, like doing teacher evaluations, then I think that's a great idea.
And the teacher leader point that you made, I think, was also something that is worth exploring, because I know that in some districts, they do have stipends for teacher leaders and they have different responsibilities. I don't know if they evaluate or not, but they would be, you know, they could look at data and they could have curriculum meetings and things like that.
Especially, do the teachers from each school ever get to talk to each other about what sixth grade Kingston is doing versus sixth grade, do you have time?
District BTKs, definitely, absolutely.
That's once a year, yeah. Well, so if you, if you went the teacher leader route instead, then perhaps that's something that the teacher leaders could do from each building, right? The sixth grade teacher leader here could be, it's a sixth grade teacher leader at Kingston and at Plunkton, and they could align their curriculum, make sure they're, you know, no matter which school you're at, in some really districts, you're, you know, getting access to the same curriculum. I mean, I'm sure the curriculum coordinator does that to some extent, but I think that's still...
And I wonder if you run the finances on having teacher leaders at each grade level across the district, how it would compare to having one elementary coordinator, I don't, I don't know. I, we have, as far as I know, there has been a teacher leader stipends here, and it's kind of happened here, but I believe that it's been discussed.
Yeah, however you want to work it, I just feel that a double curriculum coordinator is kind of just going too far the other way. Not to say that there's not a lot of work to be done, but I just feel like that's a big ticket to oversee what one person is technically doing right now, but I can sense that everyone's strapped, so I think...
The benefit of the coordinator is the ability for an administrator to evaluate, a teacher leader could not evaluate.
Well, that's why I didn't see that here, yeah, so I think if that's added in, I think that sells us off, or if they can take over the teacher evaluations.
If it's not the teacher leader, so that would be a lot of things to figure out, who the teacher here is, or a grade in the school.
That would be the building principal.
Right.
Yeah.
At some really high school, the teachers, the lead, it was called lead teacher before they just started using curriculum department heads, but the lead teacher did do evaluations, this was probably fifteen, twenty, like, it started in two thousand, they did do that. So, I mean, I think it is possible within the...
Generally, they, generally, they tend to be in a different bargaining unit, so, because it's...
Yeah, right, no, it makes sense, but...
I only put this on there and it's fourth on the list, because I do, it's kind of a big ticket item, and I do where the other towns are currently at their budgets.
Is it like order of importance to you?
Uh, yes, yes. So that's why I didn't think they're all important, but I kind of made my coordinator. I just wanted to kind of put it out there. Any other questions? These are just some capital plans, the accomplishments in FY twenty-three. Here on the right-hand side, these are pieces that are currently in, being completed or having. The elevator control system is kind of replacing the guts that was born from last year. And the in-a-com system is currently in the works, and then the kindergarten playground, that is also in the works. So we're hoping that we can pull together all those projects right here. And then FY twenty-four, these are some of the projects that we were considering, getting a closer look at. Part of the kindergarten exit, and just kindergarten doors open right up into the playground, into the sand, so we're kind of coordinating, coordinating the exits because of our fire drills and the exit pattern that will coordinate with our kindergarten playground works, like we're...
I have a question about that. Didn't we just pour a path... Didn't we just pour a pathway all the way around the?
In the back and it stops at the back corner over here. Right by the sewer. Now the sewers are on the far side over there, but now we're looking inside the fence to connect those. And then around the other side by the home's ladder, outside of the pathway. So they have a clear exit right down, would be coming across the sand on the grass. Coordinate that with current plans. The gym bleacher replacements, I think that started in possibly the Mandurki years of replacing the bleachers that have been there.
Is that something that would be shared with town for the bleacher of the gym and how it's like?
For youth and rec.
For youth and rec, yeah.
Youth and rec, I think it would most likely be a warrant.
Yeah.
Don't necessarily be.
Generally, we ask for your direction as to what you want us to move, move forward and request of the town versus what you see as a.
It's abused by so many people. It seems like, you know, we shouldn't be there to run, you know, we can scramble up.
But we can put it forward as an article in Town Learning Florida. Yep. So sometimes we do that.
He's always kind of working with us, figuring out how we should join, join forces.
Sometimes we'll do that with capital items, like I think we did with the phones a few years ago and things like that that are outside of our budget. We'll put it forward as a warrant article and see if the town will support it.
Just the next one on there is the hallway floor replacement. Continue with what we did up on the second floor, vinyl flooring and kindergarten. We've had a lot of success with replacing the tiles that you see out here in the hallway there. Plans is just the time it takes for the custom Mr. Strip to glass and one drop of the other. And air conditioning, fifth and sixth upstairs gets pretty hot in during the May, June days, even sometimes in the August, September days. I'm looking at possible options for somehow.
I thought they were going to use some of the.
CARES Act.
Yeah. What happened?
Or ARPA or something.
I thought ARPA funds were being looked at for that at the school.
I, I think the ticket item on that was pretty large.
Yeah.
I don't know where that went. If they were, I mean, I think it was in the millions of dollars from what I.
I guess we get a stipend. Cause I know that's where your decision, right? The ARPA fund where.
Yeah, I believe it's still on the table. I don't think any decisions are made regarding air conditioning.
And that was of the entire school, right?
I think it was a $200,000 ticket above with the plans that they currently provide.
But it was only $16,000 to you, but it's thirty.
Well, we were trying to be creative and talked with other school districts about doing window units.
I was going to say, I would put it, well, I was in love though. And they, I remember at the high school, they have windows, which I know aren't the greatest nails up. Those, you know, to just stick on the wall or whatever, I forget what those are called, but I don't know. I mean, it's. I don't know. I mean, that's just, I mean, yeah, this will, I think it's hot, it's hot. In this floor, it's hot, not this.
It's hot back here. So I mean, that was just a random option that we were exploring.
But then like, I mean, with the ARPA funds, like I was like, is there a certain amount you have to spend? Or I don't know what limited on, but like if you explore other options, you know, seeing ARPA funds, that would be pretty.
Yeah, again, I know it's on the table and I can talk about our interim TAs.
It's really great.
Good.
So currently we have five Halifax students who are receiving English language learner services. And currently the way that we provide services, because we have so few students who need these services, these services are provided by Kingston, English as a second language teacher or English language learner teacher. And Halifax reimburses Kingston schools operating budget. This money is reflected in our teaching line. This is the part where we'd like to remind you that this is how it currently operates. But the structure is based on the needs of the EL education and of the EL students and DESI recommendations. So we, we anticipate that this will be similar next year. But this is a very difficult number to anticipate. And we wanted you to be aware of how it's currently funded and where that funding comes from in the budget.
So does the ESL teacher, is it here?
Yes.
And so then the problem could be that perhaps the ESL teacher might not have enough time if more students are.
Yes.
And so do you know what the number is for what we, what we pay to reimburse Kingston schools versus?
I think we. It changes every year based on the need because we pay on an hourly basis.
Hourly, yeah.
We have the teachers hourly rating and we reimburse Kingston based on the actual hours that were spent at Halifax Elementary.
What's an average number for your students seeking services? Does it, is it consistent at all?
It's right around there. I don't think we've ever gotten over ten students. Ten would be high, if, if in my time.
Is what, I mean, is it worth thinking about trying to find our own part-time ESL teacher? Or is it really not, is it, we really not have enough students that would provide that service? Cause I mean, what if all of a sudden mid-year, right? That their ESL teacher can't provide enough hours for Kingston and then we don't have a teacher to provide that service?
I, I think you could, you could probably think about a part-time.
Right.
Teacher, but I don't think you're going to find someone who's willing to take a part-time position. So you could think about, you know, as you look for teachers to replace, let's say retired teachers, maybe looking for people who have dual certification and making sure that you're trying to find teachers with more than one certification, should the need arise, those kinds of things. But it's, it's, it's not, I can't, you, you could go out for a part-time teacher.
What about Puntin, do they have a significant number of these?
They have even fewer students. I think they're at three.
And do they also?
We're sharing the same model.
Kingston's?
They do the same thing, yeah. But should Kingston get to the point where they can't? That's.
Is there a discussion in Kingston about hiring an additional ESL licensed?
Not at this time.
Teacher.
Last year we did. So there's now two elementary ESL teachers.
Which is why we're able to share the second one. Got it.
So, but as, as that, if that changes or should we hear something from Kingston that would alert us to an additional need? We would bring that to you, but we, we wanted to have that conversation with you early in the event that that, that is something that could change on us without much notice.
And obviously we need to provide the services.
I think we're required.
Yeah, no, it totally makes sense. So it's something we need to be aware of.
So then in his narrative, but also on this slide, Kane's done a nice summary of the budget items that really connects very closely with our strategy for district improvement. And I turn it back to you.
So like Jill had mentioned, this kind of just wraps everything together because everything that, when we're working with the budget is tied into our strategy for district improvement that we've worked on with Jill and Ryan and other district leadership. So these components here that we were looking at, that are all tied into each of our, our initiatives here for the strategy for district improvement. They could all kind of be tied into each of them, but our building base of obviously would improve structures. It would build relationships. There's a lot to handle that link for, you know, filling those positions. We can't find someone that can cover classes. Our math interventionist, again, will improve structures, but it also emphasizes high expectations for all students. Instructional resources support that they've mentioned can kind of encompass pretty much everything there. Our instrument, position that we asked for, we're, we're tied up. Again, would follow on through the structures and processes. Would also, we could pre implement our online curriculum that we don't currently have. And tech resources and capital requests, again, those kind of would fall in under a lot of areas there. But also for just tying everything together for improving our structures or having high expectations and building relationships with our students and our parents.
So just a reminder that this is, the budget in front of you does not contain any of those additional positions that Kane talked about, nor does it include any of the capital requests that were highlighted. Payroll and staffing represents approximately 82% of the regular day budget. And loss of staffing or would obviously impact opportunities and support for students. Our next phase is really thinking about what direction the school committee wants to go in, giving us direction with regards to capital plan priorities and letting us know if there are any items that the school committee wants to move forward with in terms of presenting to the towns for consideration. And our next, our next steps will be defined by what you'd like us to do. So we have our budget hearing in our February meeting. So are there anything that you would like for us to, to do for that meeting?
I would say in terms of staffing, I have concern about the longevity of the math interventionist. I know that that was really of high importance to our committee last year when we decided to fund that. And I guess I ask you as a, as a building administrator, like if you see, you see the impact it's having on our students and teachers? Cause I can imagine that support to them is beneficial as well. And if you feel that that's a strong priority of yours to keep our, our kids not only at the level, but continuing to grow, moving forward, I personally think that that's something that we need to really seriously consider trying to work into our budget moving forward.
Do you have any metrics to measure the impact of the internationalists?
Well, we do have, we'll have our benchmark data that is coming around there from the fall. We'll have it again here. So in mid-January, we'll have the benchmark data that should indicate various increases. That would definitely provide some type of support or.
Well, like I wonder too, obviously it's due to falling behind from pandemic and whatnot. It's just, I mean, it's not something we have before and is it something that would continue to be needed? Or have teachers seen a real benefit? You know, obviously any support is wonderful. Like it's just but a matter of prioritizing, okay, you know, they're all, you know, like we're not struggling to spend anymore. I mean, our, and the MCAT scores are really good, so, you know? So it's like, I don't know, you know? And I just worry about filling positions in general, like that's, you know?
It's been, it's been tough.
It's been really tough. I mean, so adding more than having less isn't going to actually help anyone in the building, you know? Like trying to add more and don't even have what we need at this point. Like to fully staff the building is concerning.
Did you put the capital needs in order of your, of priority? It goes asphalt, bleachers, flooring, air conditioning?
No, not necessarily.
Can you do that for us? Not right now maybe, but like moving forward. I mean, I know what the condition of the bleachers are, but I can't really speak to, we're not just, everybody wants air conditioning, but frankly.
Right, and that's, that's part, I mean, I can definitely talk with Brian and talk with Bob a little bit, Scott Turner. We can discuss that. And Dick Steele too, who's in.
Yeah, I mean, and there, I think with, in terms of the gym, I mean, I know that we, we like rent it out to like club teams and stuff to utilize it. And, you know, they have pickup leagues and things going on there. So, I mean, having the conversation, I think with Mr. Steele about sharing the cost between the youth and rec in town. And, I mean, it is our building, so the school also.
Does the youth and rec at any AAU, who gets that money for any rentals? Does the youth and rec?
I assume it goes to youth and rec, right? It doesn't go to the school. Yeah.
So it does seem like certain big arts is a kind of a bit of a problem.
Yeah, and they have, they run camps and all that other kind of stuff.
Basketball camp.
Yeah. But we also have to remember that they keep that floor like so beautiful. So, I mean, they, they do contribute back to the building. 100%, but I mean, they just put a whole new floor down. So maybe it won't require the maintenance that it has in the past moving forward. But those are questions that we don't have the answer to. So, yeah, those bleachers are pretty integrated, but.
Just getting back to the math position, we have had two full-time leading teachers in our budget for not a lot long. This is a century of sound. So the last century was a century of risks. So it would make sense to have a full-time added names in mind.
Yeah.
Cause the math building blocks, the science building blocks will take effect in the small high school and see what they're doing. So if you look over the last few years, math was hit by the pandemic. It was very difficult, it was a huge math burden.
Yeah.
And I think we've seen that recovery with some part scores, but regarding much, you know, they have a good floor.
I wish I could give you guys everything.
I know.
I wish I could just, you know?
Quite honestly, like.
I mean, exactly. I really, I really do. It's just a matter of prioritizing, what are the, you know, what's the most bait we can get for budget, you know?
And every year we talk, I mean, I remember Joy Blackwood coming to the committee about band. Like it's every year we talk about it and every year it's like, oh man, we can't do it again.
Well, I think it's, like, I was just thinking about Plymouth North and Little South High Schools have a combined band. So that kind of shows you, we're not the only school with a small high school band. Cause those are two really big high schools that have a combined band. And so, you know, I don't know. And they just, I, I don't, I, I mean, I think music is super important, but it's just. Matter of.
Math might take priority.
But then music helps math.
Right. Right.
It is a research-based best practice.
No, I mean, I definitely like, I, we have all our consent at first, and it definitely opened in school. Like I really saw the difference and I totally believe in it. It's just how do we accomplish it so that?
And make it sustainable.
Yes, cause I do worry about actually providing instruments, you know? I feel like when I was a kid, you had to do how we used to do it here where you live after school or something, you know? But obviously if we can provide it, it would be fantastic, but.
Yeah, so I think if you can just prioritize those two things, the capital items and, you know, the instrument. We already had a discussion about the building substitutes so that I think if we see success with that, I don't see our committee necessarily changing that moving forward. I, I don't, I can't speak for the future, but, you know, maybe once we get more comfortable with our staffing, you won't have this issue moving forward. But I, I definitely think in terms of capital items, I mean, I don't want to go to the town and overwhelm them either.
Do you feel that you have enough paraprofessional support in the building? That's not something you need?
No, right now, yeah, I think, I think we're doing okay with that.
Especially ahead of that?
Yep. Absolutely. I think it will be interesting, but keeping an eye on, on the DLC, which is the first year. So seeing how we can make sure that it's all fully supported at all times. Again, since it's a new program, so we want to make sure that it's supported at all times. Right now, we have one special ed teacher and one paraprofessional.
And that being said, I want to thank Marie Grable for all of, all of your work to keep our kids in-house and in district. And not, not just like cost savings wise, but for the benefit of the student. And it's definitely noticeable and appreciated. So thank you for everything that you do in that regard. And thank you to the administrative team for coming with a reasonable budget, like every year.
We try.
You know, it's, it's, it's nice to have a jumping. So, you know, it's, it's, it's nice to have a jumping off point of two-point-one-two percent and not like five, because that would require a lot of cutting. So I'm grateful that you, you all are very mindful of that. So thank you.
So, so our, our, um, next item is the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. And we modeled this draft off of last year's calendar. Uh, you'll notice new teacher orientation on August twenty-third, August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth as in-service for teachers, and August thirtieth as the first day of school. Uh, Labor Day is September fourth, and you'll see that our early release days are circled on the calendar, and they, um, fall at about the same time as last year. And we have a, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the professional development day, and it's not as easy to see at this time of night. So, I believe we put it, yes, we put February, November seventh is, um, the first day in-service for teachers, and we return to February twenty-sixth as an in-service day, uh, for our second in-service day during the school year for teachers. That's the other change. Um, you'll notice that December, um, vacation would be the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. April vacation, the fifteenth through the nineteenth. Um, you see the June thirteenth, fourteenth, eighteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first are the, um, five school cancellation days, which are built in. But our, our last, our tentative last day of school, um, being June twelfth, assuming that we don't have five snow days. Right? Um, and I think those are the, the only things, we have a hundred and eighty school calendar days. Retalized dates indicate no school days.
Are you looking for a vote tonight of approval of the, of the draft? You'll be the first committee to see the calendar?
You'll be the first committee to see the calendar.
Okay.
So generally, yes, but you could, you could wait until next, next meeting to, to vote, because all of the other schools will need to review and vote as well.
Could we add the open houses to the calendar?
They are here, um, they are the early release days that you'll see, October twenty-sixth, parent conferences.
No, not that one, like the, like the back to school, like, open house.
Um, those traditionally have not been on the calendar. Sometimes they'll release them on the.
We could add it, because I think, you know, just to make sure, like, what if, you know, H E S does the same one as the middle school or whatever, and it's for parents to have that upfront, and, you know, are sure of the date going into the school year, rather than missing an email later that, you know, they didn't realize when that date was. I just think that's much like parent conferences, it's.
Sometimes, once the calendar's out in the fall, we kind of pull over the sun a lot of times, we do kind of, who has what date?
Right.
Share district calendar, kind of, try and avoid both the high school or the middle school or the other.
I think that's still a kind of sports that I do, I know, and it's still necessary for all of us.
I just think that'd be helpful for parents to have that added. Um, and then at the, um, Union Thirty-One meeting, there must talk about the labeling of the days, and so, because conversation about Good Friday and whether or not she would just be called no school day. And honestly, it's like, you could kind of almost just think about just doing that for all of them, you know, like, what, rather than have it be an argument about whether or not we call Good Friday, Good Friday, or Columbus Day, Columbus Day for that matter, like, what if we just said no school for all of the days off? Right? Like, I don't know that the description even really needs to be there. I think people can look at their own calendar and figure out why there's no school. I don't know if that's something to think about, just to make it consistent and even just no school, like, term, any day that's a holiday that we could.
So only days are our holidays? So then we leave in-service days, and we leave, um.
Um, what else?
Professional development days.
I don't know, we can think about that, whatever, I'm open to that, but I just think that might alleviate some of the discussion that was had in that meeting about how to label days. Um, I don't know that the description is even really necessary. The fact of the matter is, buildings closed, right? So it's a no-school day.
But then you want to add open houses?
Hmm?
But then you want to add open houses? So we remove everything but add open houses?
Open houses when the building's open, so I think it's more for people to know the building's open, right?
Okay. But with a reason why. So we're gonna remove when there's parent-teacher conferences, we're gonna remove, like, so you're basically want to wipe everything but add open houses?
I don't necessarily want to do anything, it's just that there was discussion about renaming Good Fridays that was brought up.
Are you talking about holidays or? Because like, the early release info was important, you know? Like, I mean, I'm not sure if you're saying, if you're saying, instead of naming days as holidays.
Right.
Say no school.
Exactly. That's, I just thought that would also alleviate the concern that was brought up at the.
So like that already said?
So instead of.
Veteran wife and my children, like, they're proud of the veteran, I think that they love the idea that it's a Veterans Day.
Yeah.
And Memorial Day, for all of the soldiers, friends arguing that they need no school, so where do you end up buying? I, I disagree.
Cool.
Very good.
So maybe we could just do the Good Friday then one, which is what was brought up. I mean, I wasn't the one that brought it up, it was brought up at the meeting, and I thought that it was something that's going to come around anyway, so maybe we could start sort of reopening that conversation about that.
I'm not really interested in having that conversation, it didn't seem palatable across the district, to be honest with you, and all four committees have to vote on the calendar, so I don't have any interest in having that conversation, what if you do?
Well, obviously, I do as well, bringing it up. Um, I just think that it could, I think the calendar could use some work as far as just consistency, um, on that. And again, it was brought up by the chair of the Summer Lake School Committee, um, so I'm sure that she probably will bring it up when it gets there, since she was the one that brought it up. I don't think that it's just not going to be revisited.
The only thing I would say is, uh, names of the people who are on the committees are gonna have to be edited before that counts, but other than that.
Yeah.
I have no input, I'm fine with the way it is.
So even, I mean, just, you know, April, like, spring vacation, like, it just could be called, you know, April vacation, or would like make them more self-descriptive? I don't know, just things to think about as far as, and then December could be called December vacation or winter vacation. February would be February, April would be April.
So just take out the meaning of everything on the calendar?
I'm not sure that I'm trying to take out the meaning.
You are, though, you're trying to take out the meaning of what all these things are. Holiday vacation, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Columbus Day, Martin Luther King Day, they're all, you're out of school, it's not just no school. You're taking the meaning out of the calendar.
I think the calendar days are the calendar days, and whether or not school needs is just obvious that school is open or closed. So, again, the Good Friday one is going to come up again, I am sure. So I thought that it would be better to just be consistent. It was just an idea that I had, um, because I think that Good Friday may very well be changed to no school, so that why not be consistent for all of the days? I'm not saying I even want to do it for all of the days, but I think that.
Good Friday.
For Good Friday, since it was brought up, that maybe that is a good idea, since it is just one religious holiday that only some people recognize and celebrate, so I guess.
So do we have a motion?
For Good Friday, if we could change Good Friday to no school, would be my motion.
Okay, so make a motion.
And then also add the open houses to the calendar. So I make a motion to, oh, okay.
Well, I need a mo, I need like a motion.
So I make a motion to add the open houses to the calendar and to change Good Friday to no-school day.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No. Motion fails. Okay, now I need another motion.
Why does it fail with a tie, though? It just carries.
It fails in a tie, doesn't it?
Have to look it up.
I think it fails in a tie. Could be wrong, I've been wrong before.
Tie vote.
We're scoring when you need them.
Yeah.
I think I have to.
A majority vote is required for the motion to pass.
Okay. So a tie is a fail. So now I need a new motion.
What is a new motion?
Well, we can either vote to accept the calendar as presented, or we can.
Then we, I mean, I think having it around wrong is a bad idea.
Okay, well, you can make it, yeah.
I mean, I, I think the issue was Good Friday, so I would make a motion to add the open houses to the calendar.
And accept the rest as presented.
Uh, yeah, I think I can accept the rest.
Okay. All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then we would need the other three committees, Plumpton, Kingston, and Silver Lake, to all add the open houses to the calendar, and then if not, does it come back to our committee for a vote, or goes back to all the committees until we all agree, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully that won't be too controversial or something.
The other committees were to vote to change the name of Good Friday?
It has to come back to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And everyone else?
Yeah, we all have to agree on the, the exact same way. Okay, so now I need a motion to, uh, go into executive session, to return to regular session for the purpose of adjournment.
I would make a motion to go into executive session, M D L C thirty-eight, section twenty-one, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiation and to discuss the compliance of security personnel or device strategy with respect there to, um, also executive session pursuant to M D L thirty-eight, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law for the local executive session, and it go up to.
So moved? Can I get a second?
Seven.
Okay, all was in favor? We need a roll call. Jess?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
I'm aye. Okay. Oh, I forgot to do dates to remember, but.
They're on the agenda.
Okay.